All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Can I get someone to make a motion to review and accept the agenda, please?
I so move.
Thank you, Francesca and Natalie. Did I do it? I did it again, and I tried to.
[laughing]
Sorry, all right.
You really need that.
I know, I'm gonna have to really do something about that.
Can't talk in there at the same time.
I'm sorry, okay. Um, Bernanda.
See, I need my name.
All right, all those in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we have an agenda. All right, so currently online with us tonight is Dina Atwood. She's going to be giving us a presentation of an open meeting law review. So, Dina, thanks for being with us tonight. So whenever you'd like to start.
Dina, do I need to make you a co-host so you can present?
Yeah. Yes, please, if you could, that would be helpful.
You're more than welcome to turn your chairs around if you want to see Dina.
Can we make her the main presenter, the main box?
Well, she might have something to share, it don't matter anyway. You're more than welcome to come around.
When she's... When Dina shares screens, it'll take up the full projector.
Yeah.
Well, who knew that? Okay. It's not gonna work. Can you guys see that?
No.
Nope.
Okay. I apologize, this is not my strong suit. Can you see that?
Nope.
There are also eight people, by the way, in the waiting room.
Yeah, Kobe's having, is managing the entrance.
Can you see that?
Ooh, we're about to see something.
Again there.
There we go, yes, thank you.
All right, awesome. All right, I know you guys have a lot that you're dealing with tonight. You have a lot of people who have a lot of interest, a pretty big public comment period. A lot of this stuff, we've gone through previously. I think I came up in August of 2024, or I did it remotely, I can't remember. And we talked about this as well. There were some changes that came into play June of 2025. So, um, what I am going to do is this, is I think I want to be very respectful of your time and of your community's time. I'm going to go through this, hitting the highlights of some things. There's more information in the slides. I'm going to give Renee, I'll email him the presentation. And as the board's legal counsel, please take a look at it. I would appreciate if you did. And that way, hopefully, we can get you through, okay? And move you along. Does that sound okay, Lori?
It sounds great, thank you.
Okay, so now I gotta figure out how I'm gonna move this stuff forward. You guys know the basic premise of the law is that we're talking about public bodies, and that the fact of the matter is, is that your meetings are meetings of public bodies, not meetings of the public, and we're going to get to that. But you have all of the responsibilities for making sure that people who come to your meetings, if they need accommodations, and they let you know that, you need to handle those issues. You're supposed to be electronically recording your hearings, what you're doing to take, you're supposed to take public comment, except in limited circumstances, very, very limited matters. Typically, it's in an emergency meeting, you're not going to be taking public comment because you're not posting your agenda. So, one of the big questions I get, and I do want to revisit this very quickly, and I think you guys have this issue occasionally, and so to the board members, I'm going to sort of guilt you and say, that you can't hold a meeting unless you have a quorum of the members of the public body. And that includes, when you look at the totality of how many members you should have. So, if you have 18 members on your board, then a quorum is 50, you know, 51% of that. So if you've got 10, you need 6, if you, you know, all of that. So it's very important that people, you guys make a commitment to do some pretty incredible things, you spend a lot of time doing it, you don't get paid a salary to do it, it is, as my grandmother would say, a mitzvah, what you do. But you need to, you need to, if you're gonna do it, commit to it and be there as much as you can, okay? And the quorum is also important, not only when you're discussing the business of the public body, but it's actually when you're taking action. So you have to have that, you have to have the majority, you have to have that quorum of the members, so the 51% of your total members when you're going to be taking action. We've talked about things about when is it not, where you're at a meeting, if you're doing social gatherings, if you're not going to be discussing the specific business of the public body at somebody's house, you absolutely can all go to a holiday party at somebody's house, don't talk about business, just don't, okay? There's a lot of other interesting things, talk about your kids, okay? So we talked about that the quorum is the majority of members of a public body, includes open positions, and I had your numbers so low, it's, I'm just going to keep going so you don't see that little typo. You all know that you can do hybrid meeting, that you're doing hybrid meetings, you all know that you can, if you need to, participate electronically. It's maybe the one positive that truly came out of COVID, that we all learned how to do this stuff. The business of the public body, so what you can't talk about when you come over to Renee's house for a get-together for the holidays, is you can't talk about the governmental functions, so that's anything over which you guys would have supervision, control jurisdiction, or advisory power over. That's why I'm saying, talk about your kids. If you have teenagers, you know you don't have control, advisory power over them.
Dina, would you mind going back two slides?
Yep. This one?
Yeah.
Yeah, can you read where the argument is to four members, because you have more than that, right?
Well, this is OVUU, but I have an RNSU question. That's a six-member board, a quorum's four members, but it's the last bullet point, action requires concurrence of at least four members. So if we have four members show for a meeting, and there's a three-to-one vote, is that a legally binding vote, or do we have to redo it in another meeting?
No, it's a legally binding vote, but you need all four members to make it where it passes.
So...
You see what I'm saying? You can take the vote because you have...
I'm asking about a vote where there's a divided board, there's a quorum there, but there's a divided board. We had one last year where there was a three-to-one majority in favor of something. We had only five members there that day, the chair didn't vote, there was a three-to-one vote. And at this board, OVUU, we had multiple meetings, what was it, two years ago? We only had seven members showing regularly because that's all that was on the board. If we had a five-to-two or four-to-three votes on issues, and we did, what does that, are those legally binding, or do we have to have the entire quorum vote unanimously to pass something if that's the only members that show?
So for RNSU, which is a six-person board, right? So if you need to have four people to have the meeting, and you need to have four people who would be voting yes for something to go forward.
And, and, and...
And so, I understand that there may be times where, in the past, that did not happen, we can talk about how we're going to rectify that.
Okay, and same thing for OVUU, we need seven yes votes for anything to pass, no matter how many people are at the meeting.
For action of the board, you need a majority of the board, not just a majority of the quorum there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Because what you're talking about, Kevin, is that you're talking about a three-to-one is the majority of the quorum.
Majority of the quorum for RNSU, and then five-to-two, say, would be the majority of a quorum for OVUU. And especially last year, when we had many open seats, we often only had seven people at a meeting, and we have divided votes. And we had just assumed a five-to-two vote would pass, and same thing for a four-to-three. So we have multiple actions over the last couple of years that appear to violate this interpretation of the law.
Yeah, you didn't do it appropriately, but you can fix it too. Your current board can fix it anyhow, and we can talk about that.
All right, thank you.
Does that help?
No.[653.54][653.54][laughing] We have a lot of going over things to do.
Nobody likes hearing that, but for an action of the board, it's the majority of the board, not just the majority of the quorum.
Okay. It's clarifying, thank you.
Yep, no, not a problem. You guys know that there are four types of meetings, there's regular meetings, there's a special meeting, there's an emergency meeting, and then there's an adjourned meeting. One of the things I want to talk about, I mean, Melinda does your postings, Melinda knows what she's doing, you're all good with that, you're fine, okay? If Melinda leaves, that would be a bummer, but we can figure it out, it's all very straightforward, you know, the 48 hours, the 24 hours for a special meeting, et cetera. So Melinda, like I said, is well aware of that. When you're doing your agendas, just want to let you know is that the agenda is what is sort of the notice to the public, and I want to make sure that I get this point, of what you're going to be talking about. And I looked at your agenda tonight, and it's not a bad agenda from my perspective. There is a new change, and I think you all probably picked up on it, is that you don't, you should not be listing an executive session unless you're really going to hold one. And if you're gonna, and if you think you're going to hold one, and you list an executive session, you should list it as proposed. A lot of boards I deal with have historically just had executive session listed ongoing on their agenda. You can't do that. We're going to talk about public comment period, I did read you all have a statement on your agenda that talks about public comment period, in terms of that you have established the general rule, which is that the public comment is limited to those things which are on an agenda. That's perfectly acceptable to do that. Some boards do public comment at the start of the meeting, some do it as the final, and some allow public comment. I think you're going to potentially try that tonight, of doing it whenever, you know, at the, when you're talking about each segment of your agenda. The big issue to remember is that public comment is not a free-for-all. Your chairperson has the authority to establish reasonable rules to maintain order, and that includes reasonable time limits for each speaker. It also can include things along the lines, back a couple of years ago, when the Barstow Unified Board was talking about potentially designating schools for school choice, and they held two forums about that, and they were online, is that not only did they set reasonable time limits for each speaker, but they also, with one exception, they did permit, in the first meeting, I think it was, somebody who didn't live in either town to have a, to talk about the issue, okay? So you can establish reasonable rules. So we talked about already, you know, there are four types of meetings, you guys know how you do this. Emergency meetings are this, I will just say this, if you are at the beginning of your school year, and you need to act on a nomination for employment of someone, that's not an emergency. You're going to have to, you can do it as a special meeting, but you're not going to be able to do it as an emergency meeting. An emergency is an emergency, okay? So when we're talking about public comment period, as I said before, that it's, you're sitting in an open meeting, most of your meetings, and should be open meetings, very limited reasons to go into executive session, but at an open meeting, your public shall be given a reasonable opportunity to express its opinion on matters considered by the public body. And that's where your statement on, and the rule that you all have, is talking about the considered by the public body during the meeting, is what your agenda is. So you've got that. Not everybody gets to talk, even if they are, by the way, a resident, that may not happen. I want to make sure that everybody understands, and I don't think you've had this problem, and I think that's great, I deal with other entities that have had the problem, but for beginning of June 9th, 2025, the legislature changed the law regarding the definition of disorderly conduct, which included a meeting, includes a meeting of all public bodies as those terms are defined. And so that means if somebody is, commits, where she, they're acting with an intent to cause public inconvenience or annoyance, or recklessly creates a risk thereof, they can, they can get in trouble in terms of the disorderly conduct, and that's under Title 13, which is the criminal statutes. It's a misdemeanor, but still. So this is another one I run into with boards, no exceptions to the open meeting for work session, or for board retreats, or strategic planning, or goal setting, or whatever you call it, there's no exception to the open meeting law for those, okay? The big issue about going into executive session is that you, that your motion to go into executive session, some things require where, and most of the things that you deal with, other than student matters, are going to require the initial motion and the initial finding of that premature public knowledge will cause a substantial, is likely to cause a substantial disadvantage to a person or to an entity. Then there are some exceptions to being in the open session that don't require that, going, that finding, and it's just solely that you're doing a motion to go into executive session, and that would typically, for what you all do, would be issues of student matters. It also would be if you decided, you know, that you all were going to sell everything, all of the buildings that were owned, you all would be able to go into executive session and not have to make the finding of the substantial disadvantage. Your vote to go in has to be done, of course, in the open meeting. No formal or binding action can be taken, except for the actions relating to the securing of real estate options. You don't have that happen frequently. So the ones that you need a specific finding, that premature general public knowledge would clearly place the public body or person involved that is substantial disadvantage are for contracts, labor relations agreements with employees, those of you who have been sitting on the board for the last, well, since March, understand, because you just completed your labor negotiations with your teachers, understand that when you all got an update, it was done in executive session. Arbitration remediation grievances, other than tax grievances, and most often used, when I'm around, is F, because I'm coming in to talk to you and provide legal services to the board. So, we can skip over the remainder, you can go through what the exceptions are, they did add for June, that if you're talking about cybersecurity, as opposed to just security or emergency responses, those are not, you don't need to have that initial first motion. Your best method, and I know that boards struggle with this, and it's very clunky, is to, when you're doing it for one of the reasons that you have to make the two separate motions, and you have to do the finding, is to do it separately out. And the first one is that you have the motion regarding the public knowledge piece. And so I gave you some examples, like I moved that premature public knowledge of the proposals under consideration regarding the collective bargaining agreement. It's very wordy, I understand it's very wordy, but one of the things that is the push, is remember that even though you're going into executive session, there should be some understanding from the public's perspective, to the extent that you can provide it, of what you're going into executive session, generally to speak of, but not giving up the reason why, you know, the whole reason why you need to go there. So you're not going to say, you know, we're going to go into, talk about the collective bargaining agreement, and then give the terms when you're making the motion. That obviously is not going to happen. There are other, I gave you other ones for doing this, you do, treat it as you do any other motion, you call for a second, is there any discussion, and a vote, and remember, a majority of the members needed for both motions. Motion to go into executive session, as I said, should not, in and of itself, be completely obtuse. So I gave you some examples of what you can say. And please, those of you in the public, they're not talking about number three, okay? They're not talking about purchasing the lands and everything, anyhow. So in terms of who can attend on executive session, you know, it's the clerical assistance, legal counsel, your staff, and people who you need information from, or who are the subject of the discussion. Just to put this out there for you, you don't need to deal with it, thankfully, for a couple of years, but collective bargaining sessions, in and of themselves, when the bargaining is happening with your local association, whether it's your support staff and bus drivers, or your teachers, in and of itself is not a meeting. It's not a meeting of the board, there's a court case that talks about that. And so for those of you who are very nerdy, and have gone back and looked at the video, you'll see that there was, at the beginning, when the board team met, they did open the meeting, then they did do a motion to go into, they moved to go into executive session, then they exited executive session, and so from the point that they went in, and I think the, then the camera was off, and there probably is nothing else that is showing. Because the part when the teachers came in, and there was the discussion, or your support staff did, that's not a meeting, and so it's not required that it is presented and recorded and all of that. Enforcement goes up through, the attorney general can do it, but there's also the way and we can, and how to cure an inadvertent violation, and we can do that. So changes to the open meeting law, one of it is that as opposed to where you have been posting your meeting, you had been posting your meeting recordings when the minutes were approved, you now are required to post your meeting recordings when the minutes are in draft. So it's within the same timeframe that you're putting up your draft written minutes. The legislation also modified the definition of undue hardship, and that's speaking to whether or not you have to either have the audio or video recording. I don't think you all have this problem, but the law allows meeting notices to be posted in neighboring towns, if you need to. And we talked about very quickly, requires meeting agendas to include sufficient details on the specific business that's going to be discussed in the proposed executive section. And there is a requirement to vote to exit executive sessions as well, which... Can I get two original chicken sandwiches, please?[1478.16][1478.16][laughing] Oh, that's, I love it, that's awesome. Board meetings, as I said, have to be recorded, those recordings only have to be on your website for 30 days. Annually, your board chairs must do training that addresses the procedures and requirements of the open meeting law, as well as your committee chairs to do so. To vote to exit the executive session must be by a majority present in the executive session, okay? So that you don't need the majority of the overall membership to get you out. And that's what I threw together for you all, very quickly. Wow, I actually may have done it in the timeframe.
Thank you, Dina. Is there questions from board members about open meeting law?
No.
No? No? Well, you got off the hook easy tonight, Dina.
I did.
And Dina, you'll send me the, you'll send me the PowerPoint or the slideshow so I can post it.
Absolutely, and I hope you all have a productive meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one second here. No, she didn't.
Can we print the attendance from the Zoom meeting, from the Zoom screen?
Oh, sure, you want us to print that? Okay.
I think we'll have a record of it at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, we're moving on, communications with parents, citizens, and staff. So before we start this, if you look at the agenda, or if you've looked at the agenda tonight, we did also decide, because we knew that people would come to see us this evening, to post a public comment after each discussion that we're having. So instead of you trying to talk to us first about what you want to talk to us about, we thought we'd have the discussion first, and then let you talk. Seemed to make more sense to us. Is that okay with everyone here? Okay, so we will have public comment during our Act 73 discussion, our consideration regarding the Lester Neshby Whiting and Caverly items, and also about the OV facility middle school model.
So, but if people have comments that are not related to any of those...
Right, I'm getting to that, but yes, thank you.[1646.01][1646.01][laughing] However, if somebody has comments regarding something other than that, and would like to speak to us now, now's your time. How did I know no one was going to take me up on that? Okay, great, so we are going to move on. So one of the first things that we have on our agenda is the Act 73 discussion. This is our ongoing kind of tickler in our file to talk about Act 73 and what's going on with it currently. As most of you know, Act 73 passed in, with the end of the legislature this past spring. Right now, Act 73 for us, they're talking about redistricting maps and things like that, that are due December 1st. There really isn't any new information for us at this point. However, there is a public forum at the Rutland High School tomorrow night, from 6:00 to 8:00. So any of those people who would like to go and attend and talk about, talk to the Act 73 redistricting task force, that would be a good time to do so. You're also able to do so via Zoom. Okay, is there any public comment regarding Act 73, or any questions from board members? Okay, then we're going to move on. So considerations regarding Lester Neshby Whiting and Caverly. I'm going to turn it over to you, Brenda, to do your presentation.
The two of us, yeah.
Okay, and Renee? So you may want to turn your chairs around again, sorry. And you may want to come over, so you may just want to bring your chairs over here, and you can sit in the middle. There's also some more chairs up there, if you want to go up there.
Somewhere in the middle, I'm going to go, I'm going to do this with the classes.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so as we go through the meeting, there's several different components, so we'll start off with, actually, there's a, there's actually the agenda. So today is, we... So today is, we just want to have a discussion about the requests that our board put in last, at last meeting. And so all the data information that we could possibly produce to produce a high-level, a high-level discussion about pre-K and elementary school reconfiguration, and then for us to be able to have those conversations here. So the bullets show you what we're anticipating the presentation will look like. So how we got here, enrollment and financial trends, facility and cost data, and then outline process and next steps. So last meeting, this is taken from the minutes that they were, the board requested that we present proposals at the next meeting about potential pre-K and elementary school reconfigurations in hopes to reduce expenses while maintaining strong educational outcomes. And it's important, as was mentioned in that board meeting, that we make sure that we are doing this out in front of the community. So that that way, if any decisions are made about paths that we want to take, that we can start receiving feedback from the communities as soon as possible and also keep them updated with any work as it's progressing. So these next set, for these next few slides are going to be proposed reconfigurations, and they're listed in terms of impact. So on this particular slide, you'll see that there are three proposals. The first one is close Whiting School and why we have the word independent decisions. So that's one where it can be done completely on its own, not affecting anything else. Anything else within the district, that is. So if Whiting were to close, the building would be returned to the town of Whiting. Could also, it would result in the closing of Whiting pre-K or move Whiting pre-K to OCA, pre-K center review and how we got here. The second option, the second proposed reconfiguration is moving Caverly to Lothrup. Again, that can be done without affecting anything else. The next one is where there's going to be a lot of tumblers, if you will, that if any decisions were made. So merge OCA, K through 6 with Nashaby K 6, and create a pre-K center at OCA. So all of those things would have to happen in order to, for a proposal to be, I guess, completed. So we, the process would be to move the four pre-K programs, the Nashaby four pre-K programs to OCA, and then move the Whiting to pre-K programs to OCA.
Okay, so a couple of just information. So the Whiting program currently has 20 students. They have 14 pre-K four-year-olds and six three-year-olds. Of those 20 students, nine are in district students and 11 are out-of-district students. And zero of the three-year-olds are Rutland Northeast students. So they're all out-of-district students. So at the end of this year, our four-year-olds will move to kindergarten. So a closing of the Whiting pre-K program next year would have no impact on current students. Students that are currently two, that would be eligible for a three-year-old program, would still be eligible under the universal pre-K regulations, UPK or Act 166. So what this means is that we could save the actual cost of operating, of operating Whiting, both annually and into the future. So there are program costs. The program is staffed with one teacher and one paraeducator, but it's two programs, a Monday, Wednesday, Friday program and a Tuesday, Thursday program. The cost of the core program staff is about $130,000. And remember, I told you we have 11 out-of-district students. And that means the out-of-district students come with money into the program. And that right now is at $4,000. Next year, I'm estimating it might go up to-
Forty-four.
No, it's four right now. But next year, I'm estimating it might go up a little bit. So I put in 44. That number doesn't come until later. I feel like I'm going to say that a lot. So that's kind of the program cost. Some other cost savings we would have is, you know, copiers, printers, and supplies, even if we move the program, because they already exist in the OCA building. The utilities, heat, electric, water, internet. I guess I said copiers twice. Sorry about that. Grounds management. And then deferred maintenance. So the state of Vermont recognized, we talked a little bit about this last year, and I'm going to reiterate it in today's presentation, that there are many schools throughout state that are, throughout the state, not just in Rutland Northeast, that have deferred maintenance. They commissioned a study in 2023, and that study identified $847,000 of deferred maintenance over the next 10 years that will need to be invested into Whiting. It's important to understand that there are actual easy, I can point to you, hard costs of a program, but there is also soft costs associated with an off-site program. And out of respect for the teachers and staff that work in that program, we want to make sure you really understand what some of those soft costs are. So administrative responsibilities that are absorbed by this staff, this staffing complement, include things like fire and evacuation drills, student behaviors, a sick child who throws up and needs to be sent home. Maintaining and accounting for the visitor management system, the Raptor screening of people who come into the program, as well as the management associated with serving federally funded breakfast and lunch. So this means each of these staff members have additional training. They have additional responsibilities in regards to storing, counting, cleaning foods, as well as educational support system, EST, or-
Early Childhood Special Education.
Thank you. I'm so used to 30 years, it was triple E, so I apologize for that. And 504, plus substitute coverage. Staff are limited to the program staff during operations. There's no school nurse, no school secretary or custodian during the day, and no elementary school experiences. So students in off-site programs don't have an opportunity to have lunch in a school setting, library, all-school activities, playground, et cetera. And it's a challenge for parents with kids in multiple facilities. And as we've talked before, there are safety issues with isolation. So I don't know if you can see it on the bottom.
Oh, yeah.
It falls off a little bit.
Tina, is it possible to pull the screen down just a little bit more? Thank you, Tina. Thank you, Sarah.
Nope. Okay. So, thank you.
If you move the people to the side, maybe.
You might have to just help me with that, but-
Well, I can also do this.
There you go. Thank you. So the staff program costs of $130,000. The program revenues that come in are $44,000. And the annual cost of operating the facility, the expenses that we just identified there are approximately $30,000.
That doesn't include the deferred maintenance costs?
It does not.
Okay, thanks. And it's also, doesn't necessarily, that's the quantifiable cost, not the, it doesn't necessarily include the soft costs-
Doesn't include the soft cost, exactly. That's electric, heat, those are the things that you, I can point to.
Are you talking a staff transfer or a staff reduction?
That is a good question.
So we have to talk about that? I know, that's why I asked it.
This is information, but we'll get to that when we get to some of the other slides.
The language that we're proposing is reinvestment or reduction. So knowing that we're going to have bigger facilities, there's a potential that staff need to be either serve in their current role or another role is needed.
And that's why we use word cost, not reductions. Again, that's independent. You can make that decision independent. The next one that you can make independently is to move Caverly pre-K to Lothrup. There'd be no changes in programs. It'd be the same staff. There's no changes in class sizes. We would save the soft costs. They are literally just cut and pasted from the slide before, so I don't think I have to reread them. And we will save actual costs associated with operating Caverly, very similar to the same costs that we had with operating OCA, or I'm sorry, Whiting. And actually, the annual facility costs are approximately the same, $30,000.
Was there deferred maintenance for Caverly?
You know what? They did not evaluate the Caverly building. Unfortunately. Thank you for asking that.
On the, on the next slide, or maybe it's a couple of slides, you mentioned, somebody mentions possibility of expanding the four-year-old program.
Comment on this one, I think.
Okay. Well, I see here that you say no change in programs in Pittsburgh, but I'm assuming if we expanded the program, it would apply?
I would assume that would be a conversation you definitely have, yes. Thank you. Yeah, so, so this one has a lot more moving parts, and every decision could result in a few different options. So we've done our best. Again, to be honest, the left side is what we have identified as impacts that we recognize are real. The impact of this is changing programs in two schools and five communities. It would affect Lester, Sudbury, Whiting, Brandon, and Goshen. The changes in all class sizes to an average classroom ratio of 1 to 18, which is the sweet spot, according to our policy. Changes in pre-K. We may have an opportunity to expand pre-K programs. As Brett just said, that might look many different ways. It might look like we consider a full-day, full-week four-year-old program, which is something that the legislature has talked about and I would say is probably a goal before they fall into kind of the funding associated with it. We could also look at expanding three-year-old programs and maybe doing a two-day-a-week, essentially doing five days over two weeks, like a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, every other Friday, and a Tuesday, Thursday, every other Friday to expand three-year-old services as well. We could keep the programs the same. If we did either of those, we're adding staff. And thank you, Brett. We would equitably want to talk about what we would do at the Caverly, at the-
In Barstow.
-south end of the district. Not included on here. We could keep programs exactly the same and do nothing. Or we could partner with a pre-K center and do a mixture of both or of something different. The OCA building has seven classrooms. Right now, if we kept our programs, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, for four-year-olds and Tuesday, Thursday, we need three. The costs associated with it to be reinvested or reduced would be the elimination of a principal position, up to potentially four classroom teachers. They can range in salaries from 67 to 118. It's important to note that the teachers' master agreement dictates who is allowed to reduce. And it is the least senior teachers, according to contract. We believe we could reduce one special educating, a special educator position, same cost. Up to two paraeducators, the part-time nurse. We recognize that transportation rides may be extended for some because we're removing children from Sudbury, Lester, and Whiting to Nashaby. We could talk about the potential elimination or repurposing of the OCA and the Nashaby modulators. Those were paid for with federal funds. And I'm waiting to see what's going to happen with the federal government and the Federal Agency of Education in regards to whether they will still be monitoring those funds and be looking for any sort of repayment or not. We don't know. And then we have the opportunity to look at our Unified Arts and shared either with OCA at a pre-K site, as well as a Lothrup site, so that students would have an opportunity to have exposure to art, music, library, and preschool age. Can somebody hold my slide out a little bit for me again? Thank you. So we tried to give you some ranges of what the potential savings would be or the changes would be, but we couldn't really calculate them because one answer could result in a different decision each step of the way. Just, nothing has been thought about this, but we also have the Otter Valley North School Building. And that school building was the former school building of the Brandon Training School, and it is currently being used for special education programs. But it is also a possible alternative pre-K site. It could be a site where we've talked before, and at one point, we actually had some social services. At one point, we had a dental hygienist coming in to Nashaby, and we had a space for her so that she could provide cleanings to students who might not otherwise be able to access dental services. So we could use that site to maybe bring in some social services that might help our families and communities. Could also be used for training, both in-house, and maybe even a BOSI's concept.
Help me with the- Educational collaborative.
What's the B?
I think it's like board or something like that. And then also, as AOE employees return to work too, they've started talking to superintendents about having remote locations, so that could be another place that we could welcome them to ours, to those sites.
So we've not looked into this other than to let you know that this is another facility out there for potential solutions?
Deferred maintenance?
They also did not do it on that. And I will tell you that that one is staggering. Unfortunately, I don't have it. Thank you.
What about OCA's deferred maintenance?
Well, we get to that. So, you know, because we talked about it last time, we take a look at enrollment. We take a look at enrollment on October 1st. It has been a fairly good predictor of enrollment. So the left side of this graph tells you what we are projecting for enrollments at Nashaby K through 6. Preschool is not on here because preschool enrollments and staffing is dictated by Department of Child and Families. This is dictated by our class size policy. So we are projecting 318 students K through 6 at Nashaby. They currently have two teachers in kindergarten and first grade and three teachers in each of the other grades. At OCA Lester, we are projecting 67 students. And they currently have one student in every, one teacher, I'm sorry, in every grade, and one and a half teachers in the two multi-age, the two combined grades, so that we have the ability to provide grade-level instruction for ELA and math. So when you look at putting them all together, grades K through 6, the 318 from Nashaby, the 67 from OCA, you get 385 students. Following our class size policy, we would increase the Nashaby teachers back to three at every grade level. And class sizes would range at the high in grades 3, 4, and 5, at 1 to 21. And then the rest, you can see, on an average, it would be 1.18. The next two columns is taking the total combined teachers between those grades. OCAs, because it is a multi-age, is a little bit hard to do, so I literally split the one and a half and put a .75 in each grade level. And that's how you get the weird sort of numbers. And overall, that means collectively, we have 25 classroom teachers. And it's possible that we could do this with 19.
21?
21, thank you. Sorry. So it's possible that we could reinvest for teachers. Some information, declining enrollments and demographic shifts over the last 10 years. As well as last year, you may remember, we were criticized for not looking long-term. So we hired a demographer to come in and do an estimate for us into 2030. It seems to align with redistricting, but that's a coincidence. We hired them at this time of year before anything about redistricting came about. We hired them at this time of year before anything about redistricting came about, so that we could project into the next four years. We have received, um, very clearly and understood the community feedback through our failed budget votes and the passage of our budget last year by one. We know and recognize and respect that statewide property tax increases are unsustainable, not just in our community, but in the state. And obviously, we feel the pressure from Act 73, or the redistricting, or the education reform, whatever you might recognize it as, and it is complicated by some, quite a bit of federal funding uncertainty.
So, boiling into, or adding into this really is we want to make sure that as we're talking about funding and tax increases, that we're also talking about the needs of our students. So, the board has charged us with making sure that we follow our ends policy. So, as we're having discussions with our principals about just where we are in our system, if decisions are presented to us that are effectively contradictory to some of our global ends, we're asking them, that is something that the board is expecting that we do. So, are you sure you want to do that? So, it's really important for us and for the community to know that any decisions that we're making are being, uh, both things are being weighed heav, very heavily from, um, from the board's aspect, and the recommendations that we are providing are, are based in, kind of, both sides of the coin as well.
So, the grid that I believe is hard to, to read on the screen, but this presentation will be linked to the documents, really shows a long-term history of enrollments over the decades, literally. Um, the farthest column is nineteen ninety, then it jumps to twenty, two thousand, and so on. So, when you look back ten years at our elementary schools in Otter Valley, you will see that we've, we've lost eleven percent of our population over that time period. It's important to know that a component of shifting looking at class sizes and school configurations is our school choice policy. And so, this is, uh, history of school choice at OCA. The next slide will be at Nashaby. But to help orient what you're looking at, the first year that we offered elementary school choice was, uh, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. At that time, on October 1st, the enrollment at OCA Lester, Sudbury, and Whiting would have, was a hundred and fourteen students elected to transfer out. And if you go across the column, you'll see that six elected to transfer in. And if you go all the way to the orange at the end, you'll see that that was a net decrease of eight in year one of our school choice policy. And then, as you can see throughout the years, year two, three, four, that number is rising. So, by fiscal year 2022, we had, um, I'm sorry, twenty-three. We had a net of twenty-one, sixteen, twenty-three. And then this year, we have a net of thirty. And so, what that means is the community of OCA should have, um, thirty more students than the seventy-seven that they have. But these thirty students have opted, well, these, uh, there's two types of students, so six new students opted out, but thirty-five had already been carried over from prior opting out, right? So, they don't have to do it every year. They do it through their career. And some students might opt out in their kindergarten year. Some students might opt out in their first, second, third, any of those. And then they kind of drop off that carryover, um, column or total when they move naturally in seventh grade to Otter Valley. So, the next slide is the same thing for Nashaby. And so, again, if you look at the, the first line that we offered choice in, in fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, Nashaby ended up with three hundred and fifty K through six students. Again, we're not looking at preschool. Nine students transferred out, seventeen students transferred in. If you look at the net and you look all the way down to 2026, the year we are in, there are thirty-three students at Nashaby that come from another school. Thirty of them come from OCA, we just showed you that. The other three from less, uh, Lothrup. We wanted to provide you with some information, plus we wanted to look at whether there were any homeschool trends. So, these are students that are not included in those enrollment numbers. They are not registered in our schools. Um, and we were just wondering if we saw trajectory up or what we were seeing. And so, by site, Nashaby, Pittsburgh, or Lothrup, and OCA, over the last six or seven years, you can see that there's this happening. We don't know why. We believed that, uh, 2020 was a pinnacle year where we saw more families and students, well, more families because it's elementary age, choosing to homeschool, likely because of the pandemic. And whether they continue or then come back into the school system, you can see there's, it's hard to see a trend there. So, um, Dr. Grepp projected, over the next four years, we will lose another eight percent of our population in the OCA, uh, the OVU elementary schools. So, another nine percent from Lothrup, ten percent from Nashaby, and three percent from OCA. That report is available on the web if anyone wants to look at the full report. Yeah, thank you, Renee.
And he based his data on, uh, information for births and, and migration in and out from the towns.
Not, not choice.
Correct.
So, this is his table. It does start, um, with a lot of historic data. That's the, the grid on top. And then the projected data is on the bottom. And as you can see, so at Lothrup, just reading the last line above, enrollments are projected to decline through the, through the four-year period. And by 2030, again, just a coincidence, to be a hundred and thirty-eight, which would be a decline of thirty-one students from, um, last year, when we commissioned the study. Uh, Nashaby, same thing. If you read the last line, enrollments are projected to generally decline throughout the projection period. Enrollment is projected to tip under three hundred at two ninety-six, which would be a decline of forty students from last year. And Otter Creek Academy, this is actually a typo because I did the math in my head and realized that this wasn't right, but enrollment is projected to be fifty-seven in 2030, which is a decline of thirteen, not seventeen, from, uh, twenty, oh, no, seventy-four. It is right. So, from fiscal year twenty-five, there were seventy-four students, and there's a projection that we would be down to fifty-seven. So, just a reminder, again, we've heard from the community and take their input to heart. Last year, at the budget, during the budget cycle, we asked them to make some judgments on where they saw priorities for our budget. The yellow highlights are the priorities that they identified. The one way over on the left, sorry, right, is the highest one, and that was providing a budget that they could afford to meet the needs of our students. So, this is, um, I'm going to preface this by saying, one of the most challenging questions is how much do we spend per pupil? Because there are no fewer than fifteen different definitions of pupils, if not more. So, I did what simpli, simplicity said, and I took what we actually spent over the last three years, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, and divided it by the October 1st enrollments. And so, you can see that at Lothrup, that means we are between the fifteen and sixteen thousand dollar range. At Nashaby, we're at the eleven to thirteen thousand dollar range. At OCA, mimics a lot closely, or very closely, to Lothrup, at about the fourteen, and then bumps, um, I'm sorry, yeah, fourteen, and then bumps up to sixteen. If you look overall at the elementary level, that's the second to the last column, the average of OVU's elementary schools is under fifteen thousand last year. This number does not include transportation, special education, and statewide, um, and, uh, central office assessments. And then the high school is, um, uh, on the end. So, another thing that you've probably heard through the conversation of education reform is that Vermont has the lowest adult-to-student ratio in the nation. And, um, it does. Well, I don't know if it does or not. Ours, Rattlin Northeast as a whole, is, um, three point eight. So, for every single student, there are three point eight. No, the other way around. Three, yeah.
Yeah.
You're right.
You're right.
You're right.
I'm right.
You're right.
I'm right.
It's shocking, but you're right.
Okay. So, this graph and all this information is available. I think there is a link on here, yes, where it says link. Um, this is looking at faculty and staff-to-student ratios, but for each of our elementary schools.
And that's to teacher, not to all staff at the school?
Correct.
That's why it's larger than the number on the right.
Than the three point eight, yes. So, these reports are available. They were shared with, uh, Middle School Committee as well. I give you the copy just so that you see the date. It's important to note that that date was projections that were made by probably April, between April and June of 2023. And we know that construction costs have not stayed stagnant since then. But, so this is Lothrup's. They did not do Caverly. They only did the Lothrup School Building. And if you can read it, um, it kind of, uh, uh, outlined a trajectory of the next twenty years, and over the next twenty years have projected that. And this is with two thousand and twenty-three dollars. Five point one million dollars of deferred maintenance needs to be, uh, invested into the Lothrup School Building.
Getting it up to tw- twenty-two-three standards.
Uh, yes. So, this is Nashaby, also same timeframe. I think Otter Valley is, although you don't mind, might be a little bit later than this one. But the same timeframe, and they're looking at four and a half million. Nashaby is our newest school. So, other than the Forestdale Building, Nashaby was built in the eighties, but it is predominantly also a wooden school versus, um, brick and steel. Uh, this is a picture of Sudbury, but it is the OCA. Again, done at the same time, between Ju, May and June of 2023. This is the Lester piece of that building. Uh, yes, thank you. And I, it's small, but I believe
One point eight.
It's one point eight eight, so almost one point nine, um, for the Lester, uh, Lester Building. And the next one is the Whiting School Building, and that's eight hundred and forty-seven thousand.
So, what we've been hearing, or what we, what we hear generally, and even, you know, in our conversations with, uh, with faculties and, and families now, is that the, the small schools are the identity of Vermont. And so, that's something that is incredibly, uh, important to the people in the community because it's really the hub of many of the things that take place within the town, uh, itself. So, some of the cons, the, the concerns that they've shared is the length of the transportation, um, uh, timing on the bus, the transition along the way, whether it's an immediate transition or transitioning to, uh, another grade level. The other piece too, I think, is just the uncertainty, uncertainty, Brenda, that you brought up about, uh, well, this is uncertain, and then we have Act 73, which is uncertain, and then we have the federal funding, which is also uncertain. So, there's a lot of concerns right now of, of what, um, what, what is happening in our educational system. But we also have, uh, we also hear, and we're also excited about the shared goal of making sure that we have strong systems and programs, and we have that fiscal responsibility. So, we have to balance. So, our educational quality standards, and now we have our district quality standards that we have to, that we have to balance. Uh, we mentioned our global ends earlier, and try, making sure that we are serving not only our, the global ends of Otter Valley, but also to our ESU. We understand, every time we hear from the community, it's the ability to, the ability to pay because each one of these tax increases is additive. And so, um, if there was, if there was a five percent increase last year, or in some cases, there was a, if you're Goshen and you had a much bigger increase, whatever increase happens this year is going to be on top of that increase. So, that, that ability to pay is, is something that we hear about regularly. And so, um, even though these are proposals, each one of these proposals has steps that must be followed in order to get there. So, if any of these proposals are selected, these are things where we would have to, we'd have to come back to you with, this is how we would like to find out if this is going to be, uh, budgetarily sustainable, and it's something that, um, we've, we've heard enough feedback, and we have enough information to move forward with where it will be successful for students, for our staff, and for the community themselves. So, uh, this is our decision timeline that we would like to present to the board. So, because the sooner that, uh, decisions are made, or at least we're able to provide feedback for you in order to give us a decision, um, I would say the better. So, we're now in October, so we're doing the presentation and providing information. Um, we have two board meetings in November, where if there's inform, if there's additional information that we need to bring back, we will bring back to those meetings in addition to the other budgetary preparation that we would be doing, um, um, anyway in November because we get budgetary information, um, over the course of the, the, these next few months. So, we'll have a new piece to the budget, uh, in November. So, we've already scheduled some community forums, um, so that that way, you know, one, if, if there is, if, if there, any decisions are made, we want to put these on the calendar so people can provide feedback. Um, and if, and decisions are not made, it'd be great to hear the feedback anyway for, um, what's going on in the district and any future plans that, uh, if, in case we have to bring this back to, uh, the board in the future. So, we have several set, we have two set for Saturday, one in Whiting and one at Lester, and then an additional one, uh, or additional weekend, November 22nd, at Sudbury and Caverly. So, we would need essentially a board final decision, uh, December 3rd. And then we would, what, uh, between January and June, uh, we would be providing information to the board. We would be holding additional, um, community forums, and forums at the schools directly in order to make sure that, uh, we're, uh, we're available and we're listening as much as we can. Uh, and then we, the goal would be that if a configuration is selected, that we would be able to be up and running with, uh, in July and August. I also think, I would also say that, um, if we make a decision, uh, and this is where I would leave it to you, Brenda, too, is, uh, some buildings are gonna need some additional facility improvements and reconfigurations themselves. And we would have to start planning those, uh, potentially even before Town Meeting Day. But that's also good because we have lots of deferred maintenance anyway. So, um, those are things that we have to take into account. And then, uh, uh, to what extent do you think, Brenda, would, um, there would have to be a vote? And then to what extent do you think, Brenda, would, there would have to be a vote on the budget from the, from the community in order to move forward on the proposals that the board said, yes, we're going to follow that proposal?
So next, next meeting, we will bring forward our recommendation for summer projects, not addressing this, because I'm not that good of a mind reader. But after the December third, whatever the board concludes on, we may likely ask for additional renovations. That might have to happen over the summer. But assuming, or if there is any movement of sorts, we know that that will also happen in the summer, right? So for literally moving classrooms, furniture, equipment, supplies, et cetera, that will happen, you know, the month of July, and then August, of course, is opening day.
And so just to kind of close, and is that no decisions have been made at this point. And we are having this conversation right now because one of the things that we kept hearing, at least during my time last year, is the, the request for transparency about the budget, how things go into place. So there's a lot of moving pieces, and this conversation is difficult. It's, and so, and that's coming from the central office lens, but coming from the educator lens, it's, it's, they're, they're living it every day. And because they're living every day, it is, it's a challenge to, when we're wading through this uncertainty. And so, you know, we're wanting to provide as much information as we can, as early as we can, and knowing that, that our teachers and our students and our families are in it every day, it's, it's, it's very important for us to, to be very careful in, in this progression. Every reconfiguration proposal centers on students and its impact on communities. We want to make sure that we have this commitment to quality, equity, and sustainability. Our, the educational quality standards really charges us to have substantially equal educational opportunities, not just within each school or within the district, but also within the entire state. So those are, those are things that I think are important to mention along the way because with small schools, you can offer a fairly, you can offer a breadth of opportunities, and we just need to make sure that we're able to offer that where, where we educate our students. And then finally, thank you for allowing us to give this presentation, and that's it.
Great. Okay. So at this time, I think what we're going to do is, I'm going to open it up to public comment, which would allow you all to, if you want to, let the board know, if you have something that you'd like to say, let the board know. And then at that, after that, then the board will have its discussion. However, once the board goes into having its discussion, you guys can't ask questions after that, just so that's what public comment is, is you get to have your comment, but no interaction necessarily with the board. But I think hearing your public comment will allow us to have a more vigorous discussion. That's helpful to anyone. Okay? And all that I ask is that you be respectful to everyone. I know this is a hard discussion. I will not necessarily have a time limit for everybody, however, if you start to say the same thing, I may shut you down. And I'm not doing that because I don't want to hear from you, I'm just hearing the same thing. And I will try and give everybody a chance to talk for those who want to. Okay? Carrie?
So I'm just, Carrie, I'm a member of the community, I have kids in the system, and I'm a teacher at OCA. So I'm a little bit confused because I heard a lot of stuff about how you guys were going to make a decision and then go out and figure out what needs, how much we're going to have to spend in order to make it happen. And that, to me, seems a little bit backwards. I feel like we should be finding out how much these configurations are going to cost us before we go ahead and make those decisions, especially since we don't know what's happening with Act one seventy-three in the federal government. They could come along in two years and say, nope, not good enough, let's, you know, we're going to close all these schools and build one big new one. Do I think that's going to happen? I don't know, but that's the point, nobody knows. So I just feel like we are making a decision without the, all the information.
Okay, thank you.
I have something.
Sure, just make sure you say your name, sorry, that was the other thing. Thank you.
I've been in the district since nineteen ninety-six. I have seen a rise in behaviors, social, emotional needs. Therefore, I think you should find ways to keep your classes smaller for now. Also, Whiting and Sudbury voted to close years ago. And here we are, you said a hundred and thirty thousand were paying out of our tax dollars to operate Whiting, but you didn't say how much it cost for the program at Sudbury. If you did, I didn't hear it.
Okay.
I just, I wonder what's the deal with that?
So I'll, I'll just give you some information about that. So the program at Sudbury is a special education program, so it is not in the Otter Valley budget, that's why you didn't see it talked about here. However, the building is paid out of OVUU, and the cost, last year when I answered this question, someone was about forty thousand a year to run that building. Did you have anything else you wanted to say?
I don't think so.
Okay. Someone else? Diane?
So in that configuration...
Full name, sorry, full name.
What?
Your full name, because I just...
Diane Randall, sorry.
There you go. Yep.
In, in that configuration, you said you were eliminating a principal. But currently, right now, preschool has a principal. So who would be in charge if the configuration went to Lester, if you didn't have a principal?
Okay, it's a good question, I don't know.
Also, the playground at OCA is not for five and under, so that would be a big cost to change that whole playground to have preschool there. Not yet, but I might come back to things.
Well, now's your chance, because there's a lot of people here, so...
I want other people to stop.
All right.
I'm Brenda Trombley.
No, Brenda, go ahead.
Nope, nope, go ahead. I'm Brenda Trombley. I've lived in this community my whole life. I went to school in this district, my children did, I have grandchildren in it, I am a taxpayer, I am a grandparent of students enrolled right now, and I am an employee. This whole situation is very disheartening. I just, it's a mess, it's a mess. And, and it's unfortunate that we have to make these kinds of decisions. I would like to know, can Neshabie absorb all of Otter Creek Academy's students without having to have major renovations to be able to absorb our students, number one. Number two, you're, you're talking about putting a preschool at, at Otter Creek Academy, we have to meet federal daycare or licensing, preschool licensing regulations. Will that building meet those regulations, number one? And what's that going to cost? We're, we're making decisions about closing buildings and things, but we don't even know what the cost is going to be to be able to make these moves. So I think, you know, we need to do a little more investigating and get some more numbers and find out exactly what it's going to cost us. And is this fiscally, are we able to do this? Are we able to handle these changes?
Okay.
I love my little school, I support my little school. Majority of the people here are from our little school, community is everything, and I would love for you to come and observe our wonderful little school. I think that if you're on the board, you should be coming in and checking out, seeing what's going on in these schools, seeing the behaviors, seeing what we're dealing with on a day-in, day-out basis. You guys are making decisions, huge decisions, that affect the whole community, yet sometimes I don't think you truly know what's going on behind the scenes. And that's my, that's my story for tonight.
Thank you. A gentleman over here?
Yeah, my name's Duncan Rollison, I have two kids at OCA. I grew up in Lester, so I've been around this area for forty-something years now. Both my kids went to ARK before they went to OCA. And I would say, and I, I guess I should first say, like, I appreciate the fact that we have this forum, right? And I appreciate, Brenda, all the information that you shared, I look forward to kind of looking at that in greater detail. But I call out one piece of, I think you referred to it as like a satellite pre-K, right? And while it might have been a satellite and it, it might have been challenging for some parents, it was incredibly helpful for me because my kids could go to ARK, and then they could go to a pre-K program for, you know, three days a week, two days a week, and then go back to pre-K. So while I understand from a budgetary perspective, it's another place to manage, logistically for me, it was, it was awesome. And to have pre-K choices for residents, I think, whether it's, it's Neshabie, Lester, that's a wonderful thing. So I think, I guess I would say that, I think the other thing, just, this is probably echoing other people's comments, the level of uncertainty that I hear all of us talk about when we're, we're presenting this, whether it's Act seventy-three or federal funding, I don't think it means we have to sit on our hands, right? But I also think that maybe we're rushing a decision. If I look at your timeline to say that you would make a decision on December third, what if I understand correctly, that the state would give their sort of redistricting guidance on, on the first of December, if that's correct, like, that, that again, seems like a sort of poor timing to make some of those decisions. See what the state does with redistricting, particularly when you're talking about two towns that are not in the same county that, the sort of district overlaps, right? They're in Addison County. My thought would be wait and, and give ample time to really assess the costs of all of this.
Yes.
Diane Benware, town of Lester. I would echo what was said here earlier, that yes, you don't have all the information, and if you're going to have taxpayer support, taxpayers have to know within a reasonable amount what is going to have, whatever the proposed changes are, are going to impact our taxes. So all the planning that you've done, and the research that you've done is good, but we have to have numbers. People are not going to support, be able to support it the way you'd like it to be supported without numbers that indicate how much rehabbing buildings or transportation costs, et cetera, are. So you've got to have that in place. So I would echo your comment, it seems very, very rushed. That's not to say that it shouldn't happen, but I think it's unreasonable to have people make decisions by December third that are going to impact their children for a very long time. On one slide, it said in the town of Lester that you're going to, somebody from the board or their central office is going to be there between noon and two on Saturday, November fifteenth. To my knowledge, there's been no communication to the town, there's been nothing in the public, there's nothing in the paper, nothing on front porch forum to even let people know what's going on. So the, the communication end of things is lacking, and you need to make sure that people know what's going on.
Well, there's, I will comment that this is our first time looking at this, so, you know, and we don't have all the information, that's why we're, we're starting this conversation. The December third deadline, I think, is so that we can be ready for a budget that we have to approve by January fifteenth or so, so that you guys can vote on it in March. So we hope to have all of that information to you by that time, depending on what we come up with.
That's a, that's a short timeframe to get all the information that you need. I agree.
Yes. Okay. Other comments? Yes, Alicia?
Alicia Malley, as a member of the legislature, I would say that this is extremely premature. I mean, we are getting the recommendations in December, which we won't even vote on until January, when we're back in session, and that just starts the whole Act one seventy-three discussion, because it couldn't even go forward based on the way it was voted out in the spring. We couldn't even start the discussion on the floor until these three options were voted on. So this is all very premature. And, yeah, I just, and the other thing, you know, you'll get a lot of different ideas, thoughts, and suggestions at the state level. The one thing that everyone, that I've heard agree on, every senator, every other legislator, is to not consolidate at the, at the young child level. So I'm not sure why this is where our starting point is either. And then just finally, I don't know why there's any deferred maintenance at Lothrup or Caverly when the verdict fund has over three million dollars in it, and that's specifically for buildings for Pittsburgh children. So that should be tapped into if there's meth maintenance that needs to be done on those buildings.
Keep that in mind, thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
My struggle with this is that discussions are starting, and we're involving the towns in these discussions. So we are already at capacity for traffic at the Lester School. It already creates, our roads being blocked, our parking spaces being full, we cannot handle buses coming in when people are picking up. And to change over to a full preschool where every parent will be driving their kids to school, and picking their kids up from school, we can't handle that for traffic. So in your consideration for moving it, you'll also have to include having another means of ingress and egress from that school, because we do not have the capacity in town for that. I'm concerned, Brenda, I'm not sure if I heard you correctly or not, but one of the comments was about the north campus possibly being another solution for the pre-K. So would that mean that Lester School as well would be considered for going back to the town?
None of that has been discussed.
Okay, I just want to, like, the town, the schools go back to the town for a dollar, but the towns don't maintain them for a dollar. So when you're talking about massive changes to a community, including returning schools and changing the scope of the community, it's very important, even if it's an executive session, that you have conversations with the, the town select board. I mean, we need to know ahead of time if we have the budget to maintain a building, and we can't find out the day before it comes back to us, or a couple of months before it comes back to us.
Sure, well, and that makes sense, I mean, that was never a consideration.
If you're talking about making a decision December third, that could put the Whiting School back in Whiting. Now, I know Whiting wants their school back, but they have to budget for that, and they're on the same budget timeline as you guys are, they're at the same town meeting, so if you're going to make a decision in December, they're going to have to jump through hoops to try to figure out how to pay for that school to maintain it. And Lester will be the same way. So if there's, starts to be discussions about closing schools, they have to be well ahead of time, and the towns need to be given time to be able to absorb those costs.
True.
So, and I, the, the traffic is really an issue at Lester, at the Lester School.
All right, thanks, Julie. Anyone else?
How do people...
Oh, if you want to do it online, there's a little, you can raise your hand, that's why I haven't called on anybody, online, there's a little hand raise. It should be on the bottom somewhere of your screen. But since I know you want to talk, I'm going to, there's a gentleman here who raised his hand, and then we'll come back to you, Kate, okay? Go ahead.
Gary, from Whiting. I guess I was just a little put off by the way that all this was just sent to us in an email as parents. It seemed like the first step should have been discussing amongst the towns, or like, having some sort of town input right from the beginning. You know, as a parent, you get this email, and it's like, oh, we're not going to have a school tomorrow, and then your kids hear you say that, and it's just, wasn't really impressed with that, so I'm going to let everybody know.
Okay, thank you. Kate?
Hi, so I'm Kate Laffey, and I'm a Whiting resident, and I have multiple children in the district. I have questions in regards to how ARC fits into this, and their, how they essentially, are they rent fee, rent free? They are essentially there with no utility cost, to my knowledge, and how does, like, how do these childcare programs get this privilege, but yet, um, sorry, let's make sure it's not, but how does, like, most of the town wasn't even brought in on that decision? So like, how would this, the program, the daycare program be affected if pre-K programs were closed or moved?
If this town is, if the town returned, if the building was returned to the town, it would be up to the town to decide if they wanted to keep a relationship with ARC, or ARC would end up not being in Whiting any longer.
It is my understanding that ARC is, was brought in by the district, not the town? It wasn't voted on by the town?
We, we put out a, what we did at the time was we put out a proposal for childcare partners, and ARC was one of the ones that came, came forward, and that's how that, that's how they became to being in the town of Whiting, because we knew that, that's how that happened. We knew that there was going to be a need for childcare beyond the ten hours of pre-K that was offered at that time.
Which is totally understandable, but I'm just wondering... Which is totally understandable, but I'm just wondering, does this affect the budget at all? Should it affect the budget at all? Should they have some expenses?
They do have expenses. They do pay for lots of things there, actually. They pay for part of the plowing, they pay for part of the electric bill, they also pay for, I think they just were the ones who paid for all the chips on the playground. We, however, pay for the repairs and maintenance and the insurance, because it is our building. And they pay for trash. There's other things they pay for.
Is that, I guess, just wanting to confirm that the expenses and their contributions are a part of the budget presented this evening?
Um, I'd have to ask Brenda, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else online want to speak? I'm sorry, I didn't call on anybody. If you want to, just unmute and state your name, please. Anyone here? Yes, ma'am?
My name's Ashley Cora. I'm from Brandon. I also work at OCA. I know everybody's talking about money, and that's obviously what we run on in this life, and we have no way of avoiding it. But we also, where are the kids really, truly factored into this? I know a lot of you aren't really familiar faces that I've seen around the school, lots of you don't really know how all of these schools truly run. I can tell you, OCA, completely different level than Neshibi. Neshibi, completely different level than Lowthrup, because of our sizes. So condensing all of these kids that are used to this community feeling, and these small classrooms, and getting the ability to have all of this help, and then all of a sudden throwing them into a school that is triple the size, what is the long-term effects going to be on those grades that we are jamming into another school? And are we thinking truly about the long-term effects of these kids as we go on with this? Because yes, Vermont is declining, but what if there is something that changes, and suddenly everybody rates goes up, and towns suddenly have more kids for schools? And then we may have to backtrack and be like, where can we open more schools? So why are we prematurely trying to close schools down and shove kids together and possibly set them up for failure more than they already are, when we could be focusing on the issues that are already going on in the schools that need to be fixed?
Thank you. Julie?
I have another comment, so...
Um, if nobody, if nobody else wants to talk, just for, you know, does anybody else want to talk before we allow Julie to speak again?
I want to speak again, but...
Well, I'll...
There's somebody online.
Okay. Who's online who wanted to speak?
Hi, Lori. My name is...
Kayla. Yep, hi, Kayla.
My name is Kyla Daven. I'm a Pittsburgh resident. I think my biggest question is, I see, you know, if Whiting preschool were to move, then the Whiting building is returned to that town. I'm not really sure the history on how the Caverly building was acquired by the district, but I'm just wondering what would happen to that building if the pre-K were to move to Lowthrup. And then I'm also just hoping the board would consider the cost to move that program to Lowthrup.
Okay. Yep. It's good questions. Okay. Anyone else? Yes, go ahead.
Brenna Kimble. I'm a community member, parent of students at a small school that I chose, so I live in Brandon and chose to have my students, my children, go to Otter Creek Academy, because, well, and I work there, because I see what a treasure it is. I see the individualized educational opportunities, I see the community feel, I see just a wonderful opportunity that some students choose to come to, and also acknowledge that it's not the right fit for everyone, right? So having these options in our district for our community and our students, I think, is wonderful. I think that they all have something amazing to offer, and they're not all the right fit for the students that necessarily live in the community, but having the interdistrict transfer option is amazing. And I think that if more people knew what OCA has to offer, I think we would have less students opting out. Oftentimes, I know that you saw the numbers, the out transfers, a lot of times happen because students start pre-K at Neshibi, and that's what's comfortable for them, and they stay. Not necessarily because OCA isn't awesome and valuable. It's just kind of been this cycle. But I also want to just say one other piece, that if we're looking at money and budgeting, I've talked with another teacher in another district, and her district designated an in-service day to the staff to come up with ways to reduce costs. You know, the people living it, breathing it, doing it, in the schools, with the kids, seeing our community, those people were asked, how could we reduce costs? And I think that that is a really great lens to look at. So just putting in my plug, that I think OCA is a treasure. The communities have been through a lot, have followed the consolidation, and it just kind of keeps feeling like it keeps happening without, like, this big overarching plan. So it feels, this does feel fast. But also, I think that asking the staff what they think, in our, not just in our school, but in our district and our community members, and hearing communities say that they would like that opportunity as well, I think that you might get some really wonderful ideas and possibilities, other than closing buildings and shifting big, huge groups of students, so.
Uh, call us.
Okay. Thanks, Brenna. Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, I'm Callie Hughes. I'm a Whiting resident, and I'm the school nurse at Lester, Whiting, and Sudbury. But one thing, and I also have kids who go to OCA, but one of the things that I just wanted to say and voice is that, you know, there are a lot of growing social, emotional needs of students, like, year over year, a lot of behaviors, and just a lot of trauma. And I am just concerned as, you know, the nurse, and also as a parent, what that's going to look like if we're moving kiddos who are used, you know, like, it has been already said, who are used to smaller ratios and having more, like, individualized support from teachers and other support staff, and then moving them into a much larger classroom environment, and then also at the same time eliminating roles of, you know, four teachers, a special educator, paras, eliminating a nurse position. I'm just concerned that there won't be, there already feels like there isn't enough support for the students that we have, and then decreasing the support people, I feel like, is just going to create a snowball effect, and it's going to really impact our kids as they get older and sort of go through the school system.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I just wanted to run there that last year, and the year before, I homeschooled my children, because I go into a large school.
I don't know.
I have, came back to Lester because of the values, because of the teachers, because of the small school. So I would like that to be taken into consideration. I also have a financial question. When you guys are putting together these slides, is there like a master statement where you guys are able to see true expense to your school?
You mean like our budget? Or like our...
No, not like the budget, like...
Our financials?
Yeah.
We do have financials, yes.
Are those monthly, yearly? How do you look at those?
We look at those monthly.
And are those shared with the public?
I don't know. They're, yeah, they're on the website. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That is the audit, the annual audit.
Yep. Yes, sir?
Craig Devenio. I am a teacher at OCA. Just want to say that if you look at the Act 73 and the state legislature, it seems like people are rushing, not just our district, but lots of small districts around the state are rushing and scrambling, and they're trying to, let's consolidate, let's consolidate, because we're going to get more power and have more of a voice when we go, and, you know, the state is going to redistrict us. And I think we should just be aware that it is preemptively, I think it's a good idea to relax and wait and see what Act 73 actually does, how the redistricting plays out, and I think we just need to not rush into this. Thank you.
Yes. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Kelly McCarrill. I work for RNESU. I'm one of the speech-language psychologists, and I'm currently covering Whiting, Lester, and some of Neshibi. I guess my biggest head-scratcher in the whole thing was listening to the big numbers. It just sounded like there was a lot of expenses going out, and future expenses that were unknown, in order to bring the buildings all up to code, or up to standards for preschool, when they're not preschool buildings right now, versus the amount of money that was going to be saved by, you know, impacting humans' lives, like, cutting teachers and moving students. And there was a comment, there was a blurb on one of the slides about the busing, and how the busing may be impacted. I mean, I think it's pretty clear the busing will be impacted, and I don't know if people are aware that the bus rides for these littles are already pushing an hour, or so, I mean, over an hour for some of them. And so for it to be impacted even more than an hour, and we're talking little kids, kindergarten, you know, and if we're going to make a pre-K center, I mean, are we offering busing? Are we asking the preschoolers to be on the bus that long? Or is it even feasible for our rural Vermont families to get the kids to a center, when we're already struggling with retention, and when we do have all of these options for them? I just want to put it out there that I think, and this has been said, so I'm going to echo it, I think that having small school options is actually best for the community needs. So, thank you.
Thanks. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Wilson, Pittsburgh resident. I'm a longtime special educator, and I've had the pleasure of past few years to supervise student teachers at Castle, from Castleton University. And I have to tell you, I've been out of business pretty much 12 years, and to see what goes on in the classroom is incredible. The teachers are so, they're just dynamite with what they're doing, with their, with the students, and these students have so many needs. And what I'm hearing tonight is, the needs are incredible that these kids have, and I think the board really, and I think I've invited you before, you've got to go see what's going on in the classroom, because there is a lot of trauma, you know, there's, these children are getting what they need, from what I could see, and I think we've got really good professionals. And it just irks me, like, last year, so the budget doesn't go through, what do we cut? We cut a teacher. Are you kidding me? We put an admin in. I ju, that was it for me. That's why I started coming to these meetings. Can't be cutting teachers with what's going on in our communities right now, and what's going on with these kids.
Susan Price. I'm a special educator, and I wasn't really sure what I want to say, and I'm still not, but I need to go off of what you just said. We cut a kindergarten and a first-grade teacher to make it two bigger classes. But yet, one of the initiatives is to make sure that our kids are reading by second grade or third grade, whatever the initiative. It's not going to happen with these kids. I'm begging you to come in and see what these classes are like. We are doing an amazing job, but the small classrooms, the teachers have the time to help them read, to help them learn. When there are 20-something kindergartners in a classroom with one teacher, and maybe a para, because our paras are so depleted right now, how are these kids going to learn? And we have so many kids with traumas right now. I don't think everybody really understands what the trauma situation is at our schools, all of our schools across, and I'm not saying just our district, I'm saying everywhere. Trauma is real, and these kids bring it to school every day. So when we have our small classes, teachers and people can get to them. When we have these big classes, they can't. And then the other kids can't even learn, because kids that are hurting are hurting, and sharing it with everybody. So nobody's getting any learning. I just think it really needs to be thought about where cuts are made, and who needs to be on the ground, in the buildings, with kids. I'm fired up. Sorry.
Okay. Thanks, Susan. Yes?
Alyssa Hutchins. I'm a special educator at OCA. I'm also a parent of an Neshibi student and an Honor Valley student. So I just want to, like, say that when we're talking about numbers, we're talking about money, the kids and the teachers and the money, we're all, not just numbers, right? We're all, like, people, and our little kids have a lot, a lot of needs, a lot of needs at OCA, a lot of needs at Neshibi, and also that Neshibi is going to be impacted significantly, so I think that needs to be considered as well, from the teachers to the, to the students. I mean, my daughter will make out lucky, her class size will actually get smaller, so, but I just really want that to be considered as well.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I just ask?
Oh, go ahead, John.
John Wyman. I'm a Brandon resident. Just want to throw out there that the only reason my wife and I are not homeschooling is because of the accommodations of Otter Creek Academy. They were the only school that would actually talk to us about just special programs for our son to do. And through talking to them, we liked the school, they treated us very well, we can be involved, and urge all you adults to see what they do.
Anyone else?
I'm Lisa Alger. We have grandchildren at both OCA and at Neshibi, and we moved here two years ago from Florida, and both kids were in the same school. They started out at OCA, and our grandson is now at Neshibi, and doing extremely well with some special education needs. Our granddaughter is at OCA, and in Florida, she was in accelerated programs, so we were a little concerned that moving to a small school, she might not get the program she We raised our kids in Lester, so they went to Lester, we love Lester School, very small town, community, it's like one giant family. Laura loves Lester, does not want to have to go to Neshibi if this should happen, but she's used to a school of 600 children, much different from Neshibi. I think that it's important to recognize that, or to have choices. We don't have a lot of choices in a very small rural community like Lester and Brandon, and to be able to be in a school where you can be one of 60 versus one of 600 or 400, excuse me, options are important. And sometimes you need the special programs like at Neshibi, and sometimes you need the small-town school of Lester. And I'm not sure that the cost of combining them, or the savings of combining them, is really worth the savings, or maybe the cost.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else online? Anyone else before I let Sue go, because she is like jumping at the bit over there? Okay. Sue, go ahead now, let Julie go.
I'm going back because I think Brenda, you said that at OCA, our student-to-teacher adult is three to eight? Am I right?
No, Raleigh Northeast as a whole has that ratio.
Okay, so that being said, does that include all of special ed as well?
Yes. That includes bus drivers, custodians, para educators, teachers, administrators.
Well, so our students really aren't getting three persons to their one, right? I mean, as far as academically, they're getting one.
It is not meant to be an academic judgment, it is a benchmark that the state has recognized as part of the cost that is making Vermont education unsustainable.
Okay, that being said, in our budgets, we're not counting Sudbury, it wasn't presented because it's a special ed program.
Oh, it would include Sudbury staff.
But it, okay.
Right, because it's all, it's all staff, which includes our RNESU staff as well, which are the special ed staff. Which I know, is it starting to get cloudy?
It is getting very cloudy because we didn't, we didn't have a cost up there or a determination for Sudbury because the program there was special ed. So how come the special ed is counting in the other schools but not that one?
No, I think, I think.
That's including the cost, so you're mixing some of those.
I am, I am absolutely confused and I own it.
Okay.
I couldn't agree more.
All right, how about we do that after? Or you let me know and we'll have a meeting and we'll go over that.
I'd be happy to do that.
But I'm sorry, Carrie, but to the, her point is, that's very confusing and it's, it seems a little misleading too. So when we talk about staff to student ratio, and I'm sorry Julie, I just realized I jumped. When we're talking about staff to student ratio, it makes certain, it makes it look like certain schools are overstaffed when they're not, if you see what I mean. It's a misleading figure because like OCA has a couple of very high-needs students, we have a number of one-to-ones. And it just, it's just very, if it's confusing for us and we work there, I can't imagine what it's like for the community members. So I think there needs to be a lot of transparency about what that staffing includes and what those numbers include and how that really impacts the budget.
Julie?
So I want to talk about demographics. So on your slide you talked about the demographic study that was done back in declining enrollment. I would say that we are in the midst of doing our town plan in the town of Lester and we received our housing targets from the Vermont Housing and Finance Department. And the housing targets for the town of Lester in the next five years is 51 new homes. And so every other town has these housing targets as well and they're very aggressive housing targets for the state of Vermont. So if Lester's at 51, Brandon's three to four times the size of Lester, so there's another 150 or 200 homes. And then Sudbury and Whiting, and all of these towns have these very aggressive housing targets set by the state and the legislature. So when you're talking and you say something might happen, maybe we're going to have an influx, well that's what the state is pushing for, is an influx of population into this town. And they're encouraging the town to figure out ways to increase housing availability within all of these towns. So when we're talking about declining enrollment, you might want to talk to the state because they're pushing for increasing housing population and with that comes children.
Okay, Diane, last one.
Last one. Okay, you know I love Lester School, I went there myself, I've been there forever. It is a family and I beg of you as a board to really consider waiting till the state does their thing before you displace our kids, our staff, and throw our whole community out of whack. We deserve to stay.
Okay. All right.
Please try again.
All right, so now this opens up to us here as board members to discuss these proposals. Is anyone going to want to start with any particular one or?
I want to start with a general statement about the timing and the budgets and so forth and so on. We had comments here tonight that we were prematurely planning this and a lot of heads nodded, and then we had comments that we needed to have started way before to discuss this with the towns, everybody nodded. It's really hard to do it both ways. The truth is that we act with incomplete information and we act in a hurry every year. And I'm glad that the member of the legislature here, because you know that the legislature pulled the rug up from under us two weeks before the budgets were due last year. It was a disaster. I'd use a different word, but.
Two years ago. It was two years ago.
That's two years ago?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, two years ago, I'm still traumatized by it. So every year, we're guessing, every year we don't hear from Montpelier until very late with critical information. Every year we don't know what the cost per household in tax increases is going to be until very late in the process. So this is normal, this is normal that, that the information is incomplete. Renee, could you show the slide, cost per student per building?
So are you in the board space, can I state your name?
Sure.
My name's Kevin Vaughn and I'm from Brandon. While we're waiting for that, Ashley Carrera was OV Class of 2021, I'm thrilled she's back in the district teaching. Thank you for being, coming home.
That's the reason I chose OCA to go home.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was me.
This one? Yep, thank you. So this I think is the essence of the problem your board's facing. If you look at that chart, the number, the bars for Neshabie are considerably lower for low thrip in OCA. It costs less per pupil to teach kids at Neshabie and that's because of scale. Bigger places cost less. So we've got to also as a board, consider the people who aren't in this room. I'm assuming everybody in this room is a yes voter. Half of your neighbors vote no. You know, our budget passed by one vote last year. We have hundreds of people in this district, hundreds of voters in this district, who will vote no automatically on virtually any budget. So we have very thin margins about passing budgets. If it were left up to me, I'd hire Michelangelo to paint the ceiling on every school in this district. Because everything you say about kids deserving more, kids deserving better, kids deserving needing more attention, all of it is true, all of it's true. And every time we have a discussion about the high school and people come in and say we need better facilities, we need more labs, we need more of this and that, it's all true. We are faced with a situation with the voting public, your neighbors, where that's impossible. So we have to make a decision, basically I think, about whether we follow that chart and say we have to go with the situation of lower per pupil costs, which the state is pushing us toward, or we say we're going to carry on. And if we do carry on, what we, nobody mentioned tonight, at least in the public comments, is we've got at least $30 million by my estimation in deferred maintenance if you count this building. Look at that windowsill above Jill's head back there. That's typical. There are 10-plus million dollars that need to go into this building just to keep it running smoothly. So when you add it all up, all of those numbers and account for inflation, so this is my estimation, it's probably about $30 million just to keep things going. So how long can we do that indefinitely? This idea of, okay, let's wait a year and see what Montpelier's going to do, you know, Montpelier's left us in this situation where we don't even know what district we're going to be in, we don't know whether this board is going to exist in a few years, the guesswork continues. So we can defer, but we can't defer long. You're going to be back here next year having the same sorts of conversations because the situation isn't going to improve. We have to make some fundamental decisions, they're going to be unpleasant decisions, that's the reality, and we've got to pass a budget. Because we don't want to have three, four, five budgets where people are saying we're spending too much money. That's the dilemma that we face. It's not pleasant, it's not going to be fun, the decision's going to be hard to make, and we might make wrong decisions. But that's the reality. And I want to end by saying, I'm so appreciative you're here and you care and you're going to have to keep showing up and caring to make this happen at all because we have a huge mistrust of government in our society, we have a mistrust in local budgets, we have feelings that, that people can't afford to live here. It's a dilemma and it's not going to be easy. I'm just repeating myself now, so I'll stop. Thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I have a couple of questions, I don't know if anybody knows the answer to. I feel like I remember at a meeting, because I just, I wrote a note down, when we were talking about behaviors and trauma and whatever, right? Do we not have interventionists that are federally funded with money that very likely will be going away? Am I misremembering that?
Those would be the academic interventionists that are, those are federally funded. We do have behavior interventionists that are always technically federally funded through a block grant for special education.
Okay. Because I mean, we should be thinking about what happens if we have to fund those ourselves. I think what I'm hearing, and I think I agree with everyone, we can't really afford to lose those types of services. I made some other notes. I wrote down Act 73, will we have a choice, right? I mean, I think the timeline, there's a bunch of off-ramps, so maybe nothing happens in four years, but if they do proceed, this board won't exist in 2028, right? And at what point, what will happen to our schools, we won't even have a say. So is it better to try to do something now or to wait? I think you're finding that across every school district throughout the entire state because guess what? Once again, we were given half of a mandate with no clear guidance and by the way, no facilities funds, right? So I mean, I think if we talk Act 73, there's no world where just reducing supervisory unions creates enough of a dent to actually impact tax rate. You have to look at facilities and there's no money for that. So that's another problem that Montpelier has to deal with, or maybe they should consider off-ramping.
And it'll go against our excess costs, excess spending costs, so we, so yeah, that's another one.
Yes, yep. Hang on, I got a few more notes here. I do want to say that I do agree, we do need to see a breakdown of what the costs roughly would be in order to implement any piece of the plan and figure out, you know, and also what percentage of that would be out of the facilities fund versus what percentage would be out of the general fund, if any. So is that something that's voted on or not, right, depending on where it comes from? And I also want to say that I think over the years that I've been on this board, we've been nickel-and-diming our budget every year, trying to save more and more and more, and afraid to have these conversations because they are hard and nobody wants their school closed. And I don't want to close anybody's school. But we have to have the conversation of how much more can we chip away at our budget until there isn't enough left to support what we have? Things like PBIS budgets, right? I mean, we, every elementary school tries to have the positive behavioral intervention supports and when there's a celebration, there has to be some money for that. And we don't even have money for field trips. I mean, our PTOs are having to pitch in money so that our kids can go on a field trip at the end of the year. And that's crazy. So there isn't, it's not like there's a huge chunk of money that's just sitting out there that we can find that will save OCA. It's going to have to come out of our pockets in the form of taxes. That's the reality. Is that the right choice, the wrong choice? I don't want to say right now, but that's the reality of where we're at.
And to get there, we need a vote from the community, which is more than what is represented in this room, back to what our colleague mentioned. And there's, there's a big hurdle to overcome there with the automatic no votes.
Fernando, you look like you want to say something.
I do, but I'm trying to find my words.
Okay.
So people know my history, I am a small-school believer, I do believe in options. I'm very familiar with OCA and the wonderful place that it is. I'm also very aware of our financial situation. However, I do not feel like I was giving enough financial information to think that we can make a reasonable decision. And I need way more detail in order for me to begin to support these ideas.
That's fair.
Because I just don't feel like I have the information I would need to make this very difficult decision. And nor do I know, do I truly see savings. So I want to be able to, to know exactly what it is that we're exchanging.
Second thought.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Also, you know, Kevin White, I served Pittsburgh. With respect to Caverly, right, my kids both went to Caverly. You know, when we first moved to the Pittsburgh area, just kind of like that idea of a small community of people that just serve those small children, those little kids, you know what I mean? That was an attractive draw for my family when we came here. Moving the Caverly preschool to the, to Lowthrop would incur costs as well, you know, and the trade-off of savings from closing down the building. But then, you know, what about the idea, we talked a little bit about it, but not at length, of, you know, having a full-time or an expanded four-year-old pre-K program, what would that cost to set up and what would that cost in terms of putting it in motion? That might be, you know, a reasonable trade-off. You know, you talk about things like Act 139 where reading instruction is supposed to be really rigorous at the K through three level. Kids need to be prepared for that when they come from pre-K into K. You can't just have kids that don't have a lot of school experience come into a rigorous kindergarten classroom where rigorous instruction is happening. So an expanded 4K, you know, pre-K four-year-old program would be good, but what would be the cost and what would be the offset? And would it be a reasonable trade-off for closing Caverly? And I think that's just something that we need to talk more about before making a decision. It's kind of a similar.
I'm, Amber, Amber Lee, I live in Brandon, I have kids. I don't sit on the board, I click for the board, which makes me both community and board, so I wasn't really sure where I fit in. I just want to remind everybody that our budget passed by exactly one vote last year.
But it passed.
It passed, I agree. But I think a one-vote pass after a year of failing, I think, three times in the year before, that, I just don't want to lose sight of, again, we are a yes-voting community in this room for the most part, I'm not making anyone's assumptions, but it appears that that's the case. But I remember the year that we sat in the auditorium and we quickly saw people feeling like they just couldn't stay in the homes that they owned anymore. And that emotional impact on those community members was equal to the impact on you guys as community members having kids in the system and in the school systems. So I just, I think that everyone on this board sits here every meeting and says we have to balance both sides of the coin. The people who are saying they can't afford their property taxes on their fixed incomes and hearing the parents say, "I want my kid to have school choice because my kid is the person that I'm going to advocate most for." So I just want to remind everyone, the board really is doing the best that they can with the situation that they've been given. Thanks Amber.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm Gabe McGuigan, I represent Brandon. An interesting component that I built from one of the folks over here's comment about the changing demographics and the state's push to add, I think they said 51 homes in Lester and, you know, 100 and something in Brandon and so on. Along with the voting pressures one way or another in this district from the parents versus the fixed income. Folks, now I don't have the statistics in front of me, but what I see visually, and I should back this up with data and dig into it a little bit more, but the households that are coming into this community, into these communities and adding, filling those 51 homes, filling those 150 Brandon homes, appear to me to be childless families. Families and households that are either aged out of the system, a lot of retirees, a lot of pensioners, the older demographics are the folks moving into these communities. And that's, and those are typically, would be the no voter. And that's, and those are typically, would be the no voters. So our no voters are the ones who are taking up that increased space, while the yes voters are getting a smaller and smaller share, diminishing, closing that gap down to the one vote that, that passed it. So I, I agree with what our community members here have been saying with, it's very, very hard to balance these things. And it's, the pressure of the no appears to be increasing steadily. And it's going to be a very, very difficult and painful decisions that we have upcoming. And a lot of what we're trying to do here in the realm of, you know, the comments of folks saying that we're getting ahead of this and it's too early, is that the future is coming and there's no way for us to avoid it. And we need to future-proof against what's in front of us as much as possible. And that's done through simple projections. We are here to, to do our best for the folks and we're here to gather the data that we can, that Brenda has done such a wonderful job at, and try and compile historical trends to see what the future is bringing. And so much of that can be incredibly painful and not what we want to see. We could lose things that nobody wants to lose and there's just no choice. And so it's so important to see so many faces here today, and I really appreciate seeing that input because, like my colleague here mentioned, forgive me, I'm newer to the board. Kevin, thank you. You need to talk to your neighbors, too. This isn't just about you sharing your opinion, this is about getting out and sharing with your neighbors who aren't, who are no voters, to the value of being a yes voter and the value to the increase in their taxes and getting that information out there. Outreach is a major component to this stuff and it's really, really hard for us to do that effectively. And it's really easy for you guys to do that with your neighbors and your friends and your coworkers. So thank you for coming and.
Can I just piggyback off that? We need to have the information from you.
We understand that. No, we understand that. And this, you have to remember, this is our first meeting. So, you know, right. And I realize that you feel it's always rushed and sometimes it is, and I'll admit to that. But this is a conversation that we started talking about before the end of the school year last year. So, and I think I just want to say that we all come from different backgrounds, we all come from different perspectives. My kids went to small schools, until they didn't. And my oldest had a great time in a small school. And it was terrible closing Sudbury. And I didn't want to do it. I think everyone knows that.
But it's still not closed.
Well, but it, it's not, but it's not a K through six. So it's the same thing with Lester. If Lester gets reconfigured, it's not a K six, so technically it's closed to what you've known it as.
It's.
Sure. Okay. But anyway, when I say closed, I just mean to the normal, traditional K through six We don't always come at it looking from just money, because you know what? Kids aren't money. Well, they are. They cost us a lot of money as parents. But that's not the way that I come look at it. I was trying to think of ways, and I think it's important that the board looks at ways outside of the box that keeps our buildings robust. And with that, we don't know what's going to happen with Act 73. Absolutely know that. We know that they're going to look at some maps in the legislature next year, and there's lots of off-road. There may not be in Act 73. I think Act 73 got shoved through so that everybody could go home at the legislature because that's what Governor Scott said, you're not going home until I have something to, to approve. However, that doesn't mean that, you know, we all talk about local control, too. And so we're getting to the point where we're losing more and more local control. And at my standpoint, regardless of what happens with Act 73 and how we're redistricted, if we are, we want to make sure that our schools remain open here in this district. We want to make sure that, you know, because Act 73 with a brand-new board, where we may have representation, just like they do in the legislature, where right now, our representation in Sudbury is someone from, I don't even know where they're from, actually, that's on me, but it's, it's Whiting, Sudbury, Orwell and Hubbardon, I think? So, and I don't even know who our, our representative is. So, and that's horrible to say, but I guess I need to do some homework. But the point of the matter is, is that may be what your school boards are going to look like, too, at some point. It's going to be voting wards, that's the other thing that they're talking about. Doesn't happen next year, but it could happen in 2027 or '28 or whatever it is. And so therefore, all of our small towns may not have a vote any longer, like we do right now. Right now, all of your towns are representative and we have four at-large that are from any town in this district to help us make decisions. So I want you to be aware, I think I lost my train of thought, but I, I just want you to be aware that from my standpoint, I just want to make sure that there's schools for our kids to go to so that they're not ending up in Rutland or they're not ending up in Middlebury. They need to be here with us. And unfortunately, that may mean not in Lester anymore. Maybe we can keep Lester open one more year. But it's Act 73, regardless of it's just about consolidation of supervisory unions, it's about closing schools. You, we all know it. We can, let's talk about the elephant in the room, it's out there. And so I just want to make sure that our kids are with us and, and not going to some, you know, longer and longer bus rides that we don't want. So, nope, sorry, your, your time for public comment was over, baby, it's over. But I just want to say, so, and I'm not saying that I want to close Lester, I just wanted to see what was out there. And so we need to continue the discussion, but we don't necessarily mean that anything's going to happen next year.
And maybe you should come to Lester. Not a single one of you, except one person on this, this board, has come to my school.
Well, I would have, except it was.
I have no clue what's going on in my school. Not a clue.
Okay.
Just putting it out there.
And that's, had time and.
We can visit schools?
Um, that, so that's a little bit tough for us as board members because we don't want to interrupt learning.
Right.
If we are invited to read at a school, you know, in a classroom, sure, go ahead. That's what I tell people all the time. If you invite me in to read to a class or to do something like that, then yes, absolutely go and have a great time. But you can't just show up and knock on the door and say, hey, I'm here to look at your school. Because that is not conducive to learning. Because I don't want.
Well, one thing that we used to do, and maybe we should do this again, because we do have a lot of.
We used to go around all the different schools. But, but school is not in session during that time.
I understand, but I mean, that's, that's something we can do as a group.
We could, yes. And we can talk about that.
Just not as a board.
Yeah, right. Just not as a board.
And we're setting up community meetings, like at the Whiting General Store on Friday.
Right. And there's, right.
There are board members there for that, so if you, yeah.
Yeah. So we will continue to ask the administration to, continue to pull together numbers. You all ask great questions, things that we have to look into. And I know Renee's been over here writing like mad, so I know that he's going to, he and Brenda and the rest of his staff are going to look into that. So this is just the beginning. And, you know, like I said, we just need to make sure that our kids are with us. That, that's what I want to make sure of. So, okay. Anyone else? Yep, go ahead.
I'll speak now. I'm Leslie Viandu, and I'm one of the school board directors from Lester. So I wanted to mention that I support our local self-small schools, feel that our children get a better education. But I also want to make sure that we do perform our future planning appropriately. And I don't like the idea of rushing into any of these decisions until we have all of the data and all of the information that we know to make a really valuable and important decision, so that we're not reversing, excuse me, that we don't do redundant work when it comes to transportation and renovations of our school, that we don't put in $25,000 doing something and then, you know, the state comes in and tells us we have to do it this way and we get to redo it all over again. So I want to make sure that we, I would, I want us to slow down and not make any decisions yet until Act 73 is decided, is how I feel about the whole process. And, but having these forms and getting information from the public at large and notifying all property taxpayers about what we're doing and getting their support is part of, you know, this process. And it may take the whole year to get everybody together to, you know, get the votes that we need to pass our budgets.
Can I just say, just one more, just kind of piggybacking off of that. You know, we're here having this conversation with members of the community who we assume are all yes voters, right? But here's the thing, we want them to go out and talk to their neighbors and try and convince them to be yes voters, too. But there is, yet the yes voters are telling us to slow down the process. So if we want them to go and talk to their neighbors and encourage them to vote yes, we should probably be working with them to slow down the process and kind of make sure that we have our ducks in a row.
Thank you, that's where I've been killed.
Okay. I can't, yeah.
We, we have a process whether we like it or not. We have a budget that we have to present in January. We have two meetings, I think, before Thanksgiving, and after Thanksgiving, the calendar accelerates. People don't come to meetings, everybody's busy, people are going away for the holidays. It happens every year. So we have a very short timetable to prepare a budget for the voters for this coming fiscal year.
And by the way, we have to do it without knowing what the state is going to have available for funds and what the increase to our tax rate will be.
Absolutely. So whether, if we leave Lester and Whiting completely aside for this year, we're still going to have to do that. And we still have to present a budget that's going to pass or that we hope will pass. We may have to present it more than once if we don't get lucky like we did last year. So there are decisions coming soon, whether you like it or not, about budgets. And we've already discussed that if we keep everything level funded for next year, that's a 5% increase minimum. Again, not talking about deferred maintenance or new expenditures or anything like that. So we know we're going to be presenting a budget, we know now, we're going to be presenting a budget that a lot of people are going to oppose from the start. That's inevitable, that's the calendar, that's the reality. So, yeah, it seems like there's a consensus on the board now, we're going to probably discuss it in two more weeks. Okay, you know, we're rushing this too much, oh, let's hold it off. See you next year. Because the same thing's going to be happening soon, soon. Keep that in mind.
Okay. Rianna.
I'm Rianna, Representative for Whiting. I don't want to sound like a complete echo chamber, and I know it's past eight o'clock, so I'll keep it short.
Yep.
I just, I want to say, community and communication, like those are the two things that are going to get us where any of us need to be. And if it's, you know, like Brianna mentioned, just talking to in-house staff about budgeting and, or ways to make more money, just communication with each other. I do personally feel like I would like to see more data.
True.
Like everybody else has said, and kind of see more hard numbers before we make any decisions. And that's, yeah, I, I just need a little bit more to go off of personally, to kind of make any big decisions like that. But again, I just want to voice the community and the communication because that's going to make us progress quicker and that's going to bring in more ideas for budgeting and to keep our schools, if that's what we want to do. But where that Act 73 is there.
Natalie.
I'm going to reiterate things that I've said in the past, the past couple of years, is that I believe that we need a facilities master plan, and I appreciate all of the work that Brenda does in budgeting, but it needs to be done by a professional and it needs to be strategic and well-thought-out. And we need to see actual cost-benefit analysis. Which, what I'm saying is, yeah, I think we should probably pause, but we also need to move forward because this is something we have to look at. We have to look at all of our facilities, we have to look long-term. I want to look long-term and plan long-term, but I want to see something brought to me. Right? Because I don't know if Brenda can do that, I don't know if our, our principal can do that. I think we need to have an expert do that and present that information to us. But that requires.
We need an expert.
That requires more, you know, hiring a consultant and paying them. And I don't know if we can get the community to do that. So we're stuck here with the information we have to try to make a decision based on that, so.
Okay. So what I'm hearing, unless there's anyone else who hasn't spoken yet, such as Barbara, I think, and Lauren, I haven't heard from you either.
I mean, I don't have too much that hasn't been said.
Okay.
Except to say that it's hard to sit in a room and agree with almost everyone and still not have any clarity of vision, because everyone is saying valuable things. I think it's great when a message goes out that brings people in and then we hear this feedback that's so valuable. And we hear the firsthand accounts of why you love your schools. We love to hear that. It make, it makes our decisions more difficult, but these are difficult decisions. When I joined the board, the Caverly discussion was a hot topic and I had never been to Caverly. I did not have kids who went to Caverly, but I heard tons of people tell me how much they loved it. And it swayed me in favor of the tiny little wonderful preschool that is in Pittsburgh, that people move to town to put their kids in. And I'm hearing the same thing about OCA. I've only been there when it isn't, when there aren't kids there, so I've seen it, but I haven't seen it in action. And I was sitting here going, how am I going to go there and not be this weird lady showing up and being like, hi, guys, but, you know, volunteer to read or volunteer to do something or whatever. I used to do that at Neshabie, so I got to see that more firsthand. But anyway, but I hear how much you love it. And that's something we don't hear all the time at our board meetings, but thank you for coming and sharing that. Thank you all for being here. This is really wonderful to see all these people here who care so much about this district. And we care about it, too, and, you know, everybody is talking about, like, these hard decisions we have to make. It's, it sure is real and, but hearing from you is so valuable to us. It helps us, you know, think about the bigger picture and not just the numbers. So thank you.
Lauren, you want to say anything?
I'm basically just, I really thank everybody for showing up and speaking up. I don't have any children in the system yet, but I plan on it in the next few years, so this ultimately affects, like, my, my family's future. And I really do enjoy hearing from everyone how much they love their, their small schoo, small schools, excuse me, and how it feels like a family. And I, I mean, I would want that for my children as part of, like, when they go to school. And I just, I agree kind of with what everyone said, that we should kind of wait on it, see what happens.
Okay. All right. So we're going to keep it on the agenda, we'll bring back more information about it, and we'll keep going with that. All right. OV facility middle school model, I realize it's after eight o'clock.
Quite a bit.
Eight thirty.
Yeah.
So we're going to kind of rush through this a little bit. There really isn't anything to talk about on the middle school model at this point. So I'm going to ask that we table that till next meeting, if that's okay?
True.
Okay. Can we also push off the progress on the continuous improvement plan?
Sure.
Thank you. Let's see. Board vacancies. We do have an at-large representative position open with, left with a two-year term. We did receive a letter from Garrett Hughes, I believe that's that gentleman right there. That was in your packet. If someone wants to make a motion to approve or to appoint, let's put it that way, to appoint Garrett, they can make that motion now.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All second.
All right. How about just one? Just true somebody. Thank you. All right. Rianna is seconding that. We're not going to have any discussions, so all of those in favor of appointing Garrett Hughes to the at-large representative position for a two-year term, so just so you know, this means that you are on the, you're there until March. So if you want to run for this again, you have to reapply in July, in January.
Excuse me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nope, that's all right. So all of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Can you believe it? We now have a full board again. Woo! I know, right? We didn't have a Whiting person for three years and now all of a sudden we have two.
All right.
Next, board seats up for election in March. You see them here on the, on the agenda. So all of you that got appointed need to rerun for those terms, if you were appointed to any of that. If you're at-large, you need 60 signatures, they can come from anybody in the district. If you're at large, you need 60 signatures, they can come from anybody in the district. If you are the person in the town, you just need whatever their 3% or 1% of their vote is. I think for you, that's like five people.
Okay.
It could be less.
We can do that.
So we'll go from there. Summer facilities report, we're going to table because that's not ready yet. Community linkage, everything on the agenda. There's a coffee this Friday at the Whiting General Store from 7:45 to 9:45.
Come say hello.
Yep, and then.
McClure Library on Thursday afternoon.
Oh, whoops, sorry, skipped that completely.
Yeah, McClure Library Thursday afternoon from 3:00 to 4:30.
Yep. And then, then there's other ones, November 12th, and the ones that he talked about, the Saturday, November 15th, and the Saturday, November 22nd. So please put those on your calendar if you want to attend.
Laurie, can I point out that all that information did go out on from porch forums so people should be able to access it from there?
Perfect, thank you. All right, district quality standards, we're also going to off-put that to next time. I just want to reiterate that the redistricting task force is having a public forum tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Rutland High School, so if you want to attend, please do so. The VSBA annual business meeting is on October 23rd, it's via Zoom, so if you want to attend that, you're more than welcome to. And then the VSBA VSA Annual Conference is October 29th and 30th at the Doubletree Hotel in Burlington. For any board members who, actually, I think that's closed now, so a couple of us are going to that. Other business for future consideration, the only thing I want to mention to you is that on October 29th, which is a week from this Wednesday, the Friends of Outer Valley Music is having their annual spaghetti dinner at the Brandon Inn, so come and eat and see them sing a couple of songs from Annie this year, and also see the jazz band play. So.
There's also a policy governance training on.
November 3rd.
Okay.
November 2nd.
Yep. And that will be here at the library.
Nine to three.
Nine to three. And you're setting your clock back the night before, so we don't expect, you know, so don't come early.
Okay.
All right. Our next board meeting is November 4th, and I think that I can take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Do we have a executive session right now?
We didn't actually put it on the agenda at the beginning, so it's going to have to wait.
Yeah, watch yourself.
Yep. All right. So all those in favor of adjourned, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you, everyone.